A great desire to start meetings on time. I call the Subcommittee on Research and Innovation to order. Action items for approval. Action item one A is the approval of the minutes of March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I move the approval of action item one A. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any amendments? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? The motion is adopted. With no other action items on the agenda, we move on to information items. At our last meeting, we received a written report by the Office of Research and an all report by the Research Foundation of CUNY. At today's meeting, we will hear a report by RF President Hector Cordero Guzman to include a comparison of fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-two, pertaining to awards, expenditures, federal, state, and city activity, and privately funded activity. We will also hear from the Office of Research the report which will focus on, this is CAUSE?
CAUSE.
CAUSE. You'll explain that.
I will.
CUNY's new electronic research administration system. The Office of Research report will be presented by project co-managers Zalicia Abatsi of Baruch College and Brandon Beggarly of Lehman College on behalf of Linda Mules, acting supervisor of the community of the CUNY Office of Research. President Cordero Guzmiz, it's up to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Berger. Appreciate it. And good to see other trustees and dear faculty colleagues and other CUNY administrators. I'll speak for a few minutes about the status of grants and contracts moving through the CUNY Research Foundation, as you know. The Research Foundation plays a number of key roles and functions within the system, mostly managing grants and sponsored programs for the City University, supporting project directors in hiring and managing staff, procurement and purchasing, ensuring compliance with funder requirements, legal assessment and signing of contracts, MOUs, risk assessment and project insurance, identifying funding networks, providing training to CUNY faculty and staff and other supports, managing project and financial data, supporting the preparation of reports, and my favorite other duties is assigned by the City University of New York. And we're organized in a number of departments, including operations, grants and contracts, procurement and payables, human resources, finance, systems and information services, legal affairs, work pre-proposal support, customer service, internal audit and administrative services. I'll talk today a little bit about the full twenty-three fiscal year as compared to the twenty-two fiscal year, and then I'll show a little data on the first month of the new fiscal year, the month of July. First, in terms of our activity, and now we measure two main metrics, awards and expenditures. Think of awards as pledges and think of expenditures as realized pledges. You may get an award for a hundred thousand dollars and something happened in the middle of the award, you can't complete it. The expenditure will be fifty thousand, not a hundred thousand. So we have those two metrics. We also know that expenditures lag awards. We get the awards first and then we kind of spend them down. So focusing on awards, our awards grew by about thirteen percent between fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three, about five hundred and sixty million in fiscal year twenty-two, about six hundred and thirty-three million in fiscal year twenty-three, or about seventy-three million dollar increase. I saw an eleven percent increase in federal awards, a twenty-four percent increase in state awards, fifteen percent increase in city awards, a thirteen percent increase in private awards, and we administer a fund for the District Attorney of New York that's winding down. That's what we call DANY, and that's what you see there, the winding down of those funds. So overall, huge increase in activity, about seventy-three millions between the two fiscal years. And for the visually inclined, that's a graph of increase in awards, graph of increase in expenditures, and more importantly, a historical time series that goes all the way back to fiscal year oh eight, and you can see between twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three after the COVID dip, if you will, between nineteen-twenty, some very steady recovery between twenty-one and twenty-three of awards and sponsored programs of the Research Foundation. If you're curious about the source of awards, you'll see federal awards, Department of Health, National Science Foundation, Department of Education, Department of Defense, all with high numbers and significant growth. New York State awards, Education Department, Office of Children and Family Services, New York City awards, and awards from private and other sources. Focusing on the one month of data we have for the new fiscal year, and this is in your report, July of fiscal year twenty-three was about eighty-nine million. July of twenty-four came out a whopping a hundred and nineteen million dollars, or twenty-nine, almost a thirty million dollar increase, or thirty-three percent comparing July of twenty-four to July of twenty-three. Of course, we want to see a few more months of data to see whether this is just a one-month jump or whether it's sustainable. We will be reporting on data within the next quarter or so, but a significant increase in federal, state, city, and private between the one kind of month of July of last year and the July of this year. In terms of awards by source, and we have this in your report for the month of July, so nice jump in NSF awards, Department of Health, Education, and Transportation. In terms of state, Education Department, Office of Children and Family Services, Economic Development, again, this is just for the month of July. In terms of city, Administration of Children Services, Citywide Admin Services, DYCD, of course, and changes in private source funding. And what you have there is a historical trend on the July awards, just the month of July. If you look at eighteen-nineteen, we received some city grants where the entire funding was upfront in the month of July, maybe thirty, forty million at one time. So that explains the earlier high points. Our high point today is not one source with forty million, it's a number of sources with good amounts, so the composition of that increase is a little bit different. Focusing on the activity overall for the Research Foundation last year, we had about a hundred and eighty-four central office employees, managed about thirty-nine hundred PIs, about ten thousand active project accounts, seven hundred and twenty independent contractor agreements, nine hundred and one MOUs, three hundred and seventy-nine subawards. And other data on our awards, on human resource activity, on purchasing activity that suggests that the Research Foundation is nothing other than a gigantic transactions machine for the City University of New York. That's kind of what I have by way of a report. I'm happy to take any questions from any of you.
My first question is, how will the impact of shutdown of the federal government affect existing awards, going forward awards, actual drawdown of money, et cetera?
I'm glad you brought that because I was telling my colleague Mandan Solis that I would bring up the potential of a shutdown, and I didn't. So thanks for bringing it up. We have a contingency plan that we've worked out and we implemented during the previous twenty-eight day government shutdown. When we get the entire amount, cash upfront, it's easier to manage. Most federal awards don't operate like that. They operate on, you send receipts and we reimburse you kind of basis. We will need to know exactly what kind of shutdown it is. Shutdown doesn't always mean that everything shuts down, so first we have to see which departments are going to be affected. Our first step is to try to conserve cash. How we conserve cash? We won't, for example, hire any new employees on projects. We'll continue to pay existing employees and continue to make existing purchases and expenses, and then purchases, the longer it takes for the shutdown, the more conservative we get on purchase authorizations. And we exclude vital essential materials, animal care types of issues, so we have exclusion categories. So our first line of defense is to conserve cash. Our second line of defense is to use the line of credit that we have that should cover us a significant amount. And then the third is our reserves, especially working capital reserves. We would have, you know, some cushion. We survived the twenty-eight days last time fairly well. Of course, it's not without consequences because when there are no federal employees working, a lot of transactions just can't be processed. So we need to know exactly what type of a shutdown we're facing. We have a contingency plan that we're releasing to the college presidents, senior administrators, grants officers, campus presidents this afternoon or tomorrow. We don't want to go too early because too early, we don't know exactly what's likely to happen, nor do we want to go too late. So given that Friday is a potential deadline, we believe tonight's a good night to send everybody kind of like, this is what our plan is, stay tuned. And we're also going to put it on our webpage so that when people come into the webpage, they'll see preparing for a shutdown, and they'll click, and they'll see our memo kind of outlining what our contingency plan is. But I don't think, aside from the day in, day out potential challenges, you cannot bring a new employee, I don't think we should panic. And I think we have some resources to move things through if this thing lasts a week or two. If it becomes longer, and if it goes into the weeks and potentially months, then the longer it takes, the more we're going to have to kind of tie things up. But I don't think right now there's reason for worry. We have good line of credit and we have good reserves, working capital reserves precisely for this kind of eventuality.
And we're facing potentially some city budget cuts. Will that affect you as a unit, and how do you think it will affect existing and future New York City grants?
Future? One could expect the size of awards to perhaps go down. On existing awards, they're rarely renegotiated down. They're honor as it is. I think the cuts are mostly for day-in, day-out expenses in departments that they get a three percent or a five percent freeze, if you will. But projects that have been approved, that have been funded, they tend to continue to move. We do have some bill spending from the city, accounts receivable. We're hoping that we don't face delays in having those receivables converting to money for us, but we don't expect a reduction in existing awards. We could expect a reduction in future awards. We may expect a little bit of a delay in payment. That's how I would describe the potential effects of the city budget crunch on us.
Other questions, David?
Let's see, I wanted to ask about the profile of increasing research expenses. So since
The profile of?
Of increasing research expenditures, I think that you mentioned. If you want to go back to that slide, it's the
This is number one.
From two thousand and eight.
For the fiscal year, or for this fiscal year, or for the entire last year?
Your time series from two thousand and eight.
Okay.
That one. So for instance, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we're up ignoring the pandemic by about fifteen percent.
About from five sixty to six thirty-three, if you use the high point of nineteen compared to the six thirty-three for this year, yeah.
So the faculty, the numbers of full-time faculty have declined. The number of PhD students in the STEM sciences has not changed. So can you say something about how that profile of the research has changed? Like what accounts for the for the increase?
It's a great question, and I think that there, what we may want to call kind of proximate causes, and then it's a broader kind of sociological analysis. Proximate causes first. It could be due to an increase in the number of grants. It could be due to an increase in the average size of a grant, or it could be due to an increase in the source of the grants. We're not seeing a lot of increase in the number of grants, you know, number of faculty going down. If you keep even the same number, you're doing better per faculty. So we're about steady in the number of grants. We tend to be getting higher average size grants, in part due to the fact that we're getting more federal and more city that maybe trend a little bit higher than, say, the private foundation. Those maybe two, three hundred thousand, the foundation are about a hundred thousand on average. So I think a combination of changing the sources and changing the average size is what explains it from a kind of same, let's say, mathematical now. So psychologically, leadership in the system and the emphasis on the research operation, I think, has had an impact. Investments in the research infrastructure, we're about to hear about CAUSE, for example, and of course, that's not paying off quite yet, but there's some campuses that have already have adopted a lot more pre-award support. I think a support for proposal and peer review of proposals is becoming more effective within the system. I want to try to give some credit to the joint efforts within the Office of Research and our work pre-proposal unit. Department of Defense, we did a workshop, for example. We brought all program officers from the Defense Department. Immediately next quarter, we saw a five million dollar increase in Department of Defense grants, just one example. So there's good return on investment on those exposure to funder type of activities. We've found more funder responsiveness to proposals from CUNY. I think CUNY is in the map, and places like Mellon and others have been very generous and supportive of CUNY. Faculty work and creativity, I think, is steady and growing and increasing. Chancellor remarked in a press release today, any important topic of the day, there's a CUNY faculty member somewhere doing good work on it. And I think that's becoming more and more visible, and I don't think you can ever underestimate kind of faculty creativity and ingenuity and innovation. And the high quality of the faculty that CUNY is attracting consistently, especially over the last few years. And I think the topics that CUNY folks tend to focus on, environmental change, demographic change, a lot of very interesting work, as you know, in the natural sciences through some investments that have been made in kind of facilities and related. So research interests that are relevant and very fundable, I think, also explain it. And lastly, I think, or would like to think that those of us that work in research administration are sending signals to our colleagues that we're going to take good care of you when you send that grant and take that project out there, that we're going to work in partnership with you to make it work. So we're trying to kind of work our way through some of the previous challenges and make them less daunting so that faculty can focus on ingenuity and creativity, and we can do our admin work, and we can all kind of propel the enterprise forward, yeah? Thanks for the question. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Sort of a follow-up. When I saw this graph in the report, I immediately wanted some things you just highlighted as important to help answer questions as opposed to just pose them. So the number of grants by source, federal, state, city, would be nice to have mapped on this. Also, those segmenting the graphs so that you saw the change over time for that would also be helpful. And thinking forward, I think there's a public impact research that's being pitched in the strategic plan. It might be nice to be able to highlight that in the reports going forward so we can see progress there because I heard last time about the DOE and the change there. I saw it slid down a little bit June over Ju-, or July over July, but those things get lost in these aggregated numbers, and it's great to pull them out.
For sure. I'm happy to work with you, follow up with kind of data that you think would be useful for faculty and other administrators to have, and we're happy to dig into our numbers and produce them for public consumption. We've added a lot of new data to our annual reporting. We're happy to add more and whatever folks in the system believe they need to be able to move, you know, move our knowledge of the research enterprise forward. And those are great suggestions. If I may follow up with you via email, we'll work on a list and we'll produce that information for you.
Okay. Other questions? If not, let's switch to the Office of Research.
Thank you.
Who's doing that? Are you?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you all the progress and implementation timeline of CUNY's very first university-wide electronic research administration system, CAUSE. My name is Brandon Beggarly, and this is Zalicia Abucci, and we are honored to serve as co-project managers of this initiative.
Good, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having us. As we know, in CUNY's current research environment, which the slide shows, pre-award, compliance, and non-financial post-award processes are different across the colleges. This new system gives the university the opportunity to streamline those activities in a way that would allow the consistency, transparency, and efficiency. In addition, it would allow for more sophisticated data collection and reporting while working to support and complement the systems that are used by the Research Foundation to provide a full-cycle administrative technical infrastructure to CUNY's research and sponsored programs enterprise. CAUSE's procurement will enable the university to address current challenges while positioning us for tomorrow's growth. Since CUNY is large, it's a very large university system with twenty-five colleges and schools, with sponsored project activity, as Hector just delved into the, to the details of that, approximately five hundred million per our preparation of our slides, a detailed discovery process which included grants officers, compliance officers, faculty members were, was undertaken. The Implementation Working Group found that each college and school follows its own procedures for managing the pre-award, non-financial, post-award, and compliance elements of research administration. The existence of these different and disparate processes and procedures routinely increase administrative burden on faculty, on staff, and increases the risk for both individual institutions and the university as a whole. Over the years, CUNY's research leaders and administrators have attempted ad hoc stopgaps, one-off patches to attempt to address inefficiencies and risk in our research enterprise. However, these efforts all shed light on a single challenge. How do we get everyone to do the same thing the same way every time? The answer? A university-wide ERA solution. CUNY's lack of such a system puts it as a disadvantage in the higher-ed research administration arena. We struggle with significant bottlenecks to increase research success, growing indirect cost recoveries, and protecting CUNY from legal and financial risk. CAUSE was selected in very large part for its configurability to complex organizations like CUNY. It's readily adaptable, and it is readily adaptable, and is committed to growing with us and for us as we grow our research and sponsored projects enterprise. The impacts of CAUSE. ERA systems were first developed through cooperation among federal research agencies, NSF, NIH, DOE, DoD, and higher education institutions. It's become ubiquitous across the higher education landscape, and they have become the backbone for modern research administration, from pre-award all the way to closeout and post-award. They consolidate functions across the complex landscape, at most all function in sync. It includes pre-award, post-award, pre-award, proposal development, internal controls, routings and approvals, budget development, negotiation, fund setup, the Research Foundation's part, post-award transactions, reporting requirements, and regulatory compliance and ethics. ERA systems are designed to enhance efficiency, speed, user friendliness, our faculty members all can appreciate that, for nearly every research stakeholder, from college leaders to research administrative staff, faculty, and students. CUNY Central, supported by RF CUNY in the procurement process, attained CAUSE on behalf of the colleges and schools to invest in the long-term prosperity of CUNY. Implementing this enterprise solution at scale, each institution will receive a uniform product package designed to enable the sustainable growth of external grant success by reducing data entry, enhancing product tracking, project tracking, improving the researcher-user experience, and providing protection from legal and financial risk.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the modules themselves. We have procured a total of seven modules in a package. The CAUSE products provided to each CUNY institution will include the Sponsored Projects Module, a unified repository of all grant data and reporting capability. The Proposals Module, which is a platform for fast, accurate federal proposal submission, system to system. So it will be able to submit directly to the federal government any proposal from the campus without having to use a different portal or a different system, as is currently the practice. Outside Interest. This will manage all of the conflicts of interest, management within the university system related to sponsored projects. Hazard Safety, Biosafety Review and Approval Hub. Human Ethics, Human Subjects Research Module that will serve as a bridge to our current IRB manager platform. Fund Manager. This will be a faculty dashboard for award tracking that will work in concert with RF CUNY Financial Systems to assist faculty with budgetary actions such as requesting modifications, doing projections, and so forth. And then an Effort Tracking Tool, which will track personal time that will capture faculty and staff effort devoted to a given project at a, at a single time, and work in concert with RF CUNY's effort certification system. So the implementation process and timeline. CAUSE's implementation process will be comprised of five distinct steps: discovery, configuration, testing, training, and rollout. And that will happen at all phases of the implementation. And so this first phase will consist of the platform, proposals, and COI. Each process will be embarked upon on a per-module basis for each CAUSE product being implemented as opposed to a phased rollout of all CAUSE products at one college or school at a time. Essentially, all CUNY schools will get the same modules at the same time within the implementation process. The first phase of implementation includes the Administrative Platform. It's where all of the administrative data will live that will drive the rest of the groundwork for the other platforms. Sponsored Projects, Proposals, and Outside Interest Modules. Phase two will launch the Hazard Safety Module, and phase three will complete with the implementation process of Human Ethics, Fund Manager, and the Efforts Tracking Module. So let's talk about the finances. CUNY, with the Research Foundation's support, have committed the funding outlined above such that the individual colleges will see no cost for the first three years. The return on investment for CUNY is expected to be substantial and encompass three areas. First, CAUSE will increase external revenue for colleges through faculty grant success. Statistically, institutions that adopt CAUSE have experienced, on average, an approximate twenty percent increase in external grant proposal submissions, as well as an approximate five to seven percent growth of grant awards year over year. For example, a CUNY college with ten million in annual grant activity is likely to increase between two-point-seven-five and four-point-million, four million over a five-year period. This creates a virtuous cycle of indirect cost recovery growth which sustains and improves the overall financial health of the institution. Second, CAUSE will enhance the protection of existing assets through stronger compliance. Research institutions must abide by complex laws, regulations, and ethical mandates that ensure studies and projects are conducted in accordance with federal, state, and private sponsor requirements. When violations occur, institutions are subject to sizable fines, funder restrictions, legal investigations, and reputation harm. CAUSE provides a rigorous, auditable, and uniform compliance system which CUNY presently lacks and will serve as a safeguard against future compliance lapses. Third, CAUSE will substantially decrease the transaction and administrative cost of managing research through system inefficiencies, through system efficiencies, and stakeholder time savings. Automations, smart routing, fixed redundancies, and effort checks will enable the university's diminished pool of research administration staff to prepare more grants for submission. Similarly, streamlined and user-friendly front-end procedures will lower barriers to entry so more faculty members will choose to start, continue, and reengage in seeking external grants. This will empower a more cost-effective, nimble, and high-volume research enterprise at each CUNY college and school. The implementation of CAUSE officially kicked off last month, and the CUNY project managers meet at least twice a week with the CAUSE project management team and CUNY CIS project management teams. Various stakeholders and subject matter experts are engaged throughout this process and are invited to attend are invited to attend project management meetings as needed. Upon the completion of implementation, Caius will be centrally managed and supported by the CUNY Office of Research. The research systems officer will coordinate transitional needs, stakeholder trainings, vendor liaisons, and continual system improvements. As with any system implementation, collaboration and communication are key to success. We have engaged with multiple stakeholders and stakeholder groups across the university and will continue to do so as needed or required during the implementation process. We intend to create an ongoing advisory board that will serve to inform the Office of Research on system use, improvements, and challenges beyond implementation. Implementation is currently on schedule, and two major activities have already been completed. Uh, we've completed the university-wide discovery process, and we have deployed, uh, tax levy funding to support colleges and schools in implementation readiness through the hiring of part-time, uh, help for each office. And we will be launching the ERA website eminently. Uh, the website will serve as a hub that will aid to inform all stakeholders of the progress of implementation, provide FAQs on the system and its implementation, and offer a space to view demos, submit questions, and provide user feedback. Thank you again for the opportunity to share with you today. Please do not hesitate to reach out with any questions, and we're happy to take your questions now.
Thank you both for the presentation. You mentioned at the very beginning that each college or each unit had its own procedures, its whatever, whatever. Has there been any pushback from any of the colleges to adopting this system? Are we expecting any problems in actually getting the colleges to implement this?
There has actually been minimal pushback. Um, I think by and large, the colleges are very excited about this. It's been probably about a ten-year effort to arrive to the place where we are today, and so I think the excitement far outweighs any hesitancy. Off the top of my head, I think I've only received two pieces of feedback from colleges that are hesitant about the system change.
If there are problems, make sure that the provost's office is involved.
This is one of those, I think, is widely viewed as a win-win across, and people don't like new systems, and, and so we always get some pushback with that, but this is such a game changer in terms of the research, uh, infrastructure. I just wanted to thank both of you for, I mean, they've done an incredible amount of work and also the partnership of RF. It's, it's been a real cross-institutional commitment.
This is academia, and we're asking for change, so, uh, you know, you're on top of it now, keep on top of it. John, you've got something?
I didn't notice, and maybe I missed it, a module for expenditure facilitation. So is that part of this? Does, does it interface with CUNY Buy or some other?
So at this time, it won't interface with CUNY Buy, though there may be that possibility later on, but the fund manager module is kind of the, the financial piece, and it, it does have the capability to speak to RF financial systems to the extent that, um, that, that is helpful. And I, I wish I had a demo to show you, but it really does give a comprehensive dashboard to both faculty and administrators to see all of their awards in one place, all of the budgets in one place, do their projections, do their modifications, all in, all in one dashboard. And as, as the system grows with us, there, there is the possibility for it to integrate and configure with other CUNY systems as well.
And just because I can be painful about this, I noticed that final implementation isn't until twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
So the, the implementation of the various modules was planned in terms of how impactful they will be on the process. And so the first three modules, outside interest, sponsored projects, and proposals, are the workhouses of the research enterprise, pretty much. The, the everyday, day-to-day submitting a proposal, getting an award notice, and doing the, the back and forth, approval, the routings, budget modifications, having your dean and your chair, see those little pieces of your budget, approve, um, your reassigned time and these types of things. That's the true workhorse of the project and sponsors' projects. So once we get everyone on board and accustomed to using the system for that fundamental piece, then the fades, the rollout for the other smaller modules will, will intercede over the next three years.
And that seems to go through the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year, those major pieces?
We anticipate to go live with the first three modules by the end of July.
Next year.
And those, those do have the most impact on potential ROI of the system.
We are never upset if we see these as outside limits and that things happen more expeditiously than, uh, on the timeline.
Well, the, the training has to be in place, too. I mean, that's what we found, is that when we implement without the appropriate amount of in-depth training, that we end up scratching the surface of what the usage is. So in this particular case, I think, um, a very smart strategic implementation plan to use the major bang for your buck and then get folks excited about the remainder.
So I do, I do want to add as well that we recognize that it is a big change for CUNY, and as part of our, our envisioning of the rollout, we talked about change management and how important that would be to include someone to help our faculty and our administrators understand how best to incorporate, um, Caius into the way they do their jobs, because that's not always easy for people to make that transition in their heads.
All of this is flowing through our new Office of Academic Technology, which we created this year, um, to create the interface between CIS and the academic side so that it is integrated, it is consistent across the system. So a big step forward there, and also wanted to say quickly, because I know we're often talking about the forty million in state strategic funds that came in, this is one project that came out of that and reflects the prioritization of that money, where it would then generate additional money through an infusion of front-end funding. So we're really excited about this for many reasons.
Thank you. Anything further, David?
So as I understood, you, you just said it was going to be rolled out in next summer, but I think your, one of your slides said two thousand and twenty-three, one through five. What, so when, so for example, we have Caius on our campus now, I'm about to submit a proposal tomorrow, it looks the same as it did a year ago, and not like what you showed. But, so when will it be rolled out?
So you'll see, uh, for your instance of Caius, you'll see the first changes actually through the COI module, uh, which should be fully rolled out by the end of this year, if I'm not mistaken.
March.
March, yeah, early next year. But as far as SP and proposals, that enter, that, uh, end user view, you probably won't see any major differences to until about July.
Twenty twenty-four.
Uh, twenty twenty-four, yeah.
The, the, I mean, on the matter of change, I, I think that you should not underestimate the, I, I think when faculty hear change management, they run out of the room. And I, you should not underestimate that, that this has changed. Now, you know, we, I, I see it as a, as, as a step forward. My colleagues will not see it that way. Um, and I, I would put a lot of energy into
We do.
rolling it out gently and, and making sure that, that people are on board with it.
Absolutely.
Um, and I think, I mean, you, like, one of the things that are in your slide is that there's a promise of reduced administrative burden for a whole group of people. So I think, I'd like to know how that would, how my administrative burden is going to be reduced? For example, specific example, I know you don't have them now, but
I can give you a specific example.
Okay.
I can give you a specific example. Um, and so I, I'm a grants officer, I am the grants officer at Baruch College, and so I deal every day one-on-one with faculty members like yourself submitting a proposal. And so over the years, I've realized that there's a lot that faculty members, they don't, that you don't put together as part of the puzzle, right? So you, you tend to be able, want to be able to plan for the eventualities or plan for your timelines for the things that may come up, but you don't have an overview of the timing of when these things may come up. So you submitted your proposal, and then, oh, I hear I need to do IRB, and ORB doesn't know that I submitted it, so then you have to coordinate with IRB, and then you have to come back to us and let us know. That won't be the case. So when you fill out your proposal form and you say, I need IRB, IRB automatically gets notified that you submitted something that needs IRB.
So they, sorry, I mean, to cut you off, I know we're running past time. I was, I think it would be a great idea for us to arrange to have a presentation to the faculty senate and the research committee and get more communication going. But an example.
Great, thank you.
Anything more? Thank you both very much. Amazing work, I appreciate it. Thank you, provost. With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposition? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.